Okay, we want to get started. Good evening and welcome to the April 23 zoning board of adjustment meeting. To my left is Mr. Carter Fark, who is the Deputy Planning Manager for the City of Nashua. Across the way, we have Mr. Jay Minkera, Mr. Jack Courier, Mr. Steve Lionel, who serves as our Vice President, Ms. Mary Ellen McKay, who serves as our Secretary, and I'm JP Boucher. I serve as your Chairman tonight. This meeting is recorded by written transcript, audio tape, and video. We ask that you please direct all testimony to the microphone and only one person speak at a time. If you don't have a copy of tonight's agenda, feel free to get a copy. It's located on the table in the back of the auditorium. Tonight, we'll be hearing only requests for variances, so I'm only going to go over the variance criteria. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. The five criteria that need to be established for the approval of a variance are: one, the variance will not be contrary to public interest; two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed; three, substantial justice is done; four, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished; and five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. Per the City of Nashua bylaws, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this board will hear any in all scheduled cases, as long as a quorum of three voting board members are present at this meeting, which there is tonight. Any citizen has the right to contest a decision that this board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received through Mr. Fark and the City of Nashua Planning Department within thirty days from the day after a decision was made. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. You can contact Mr. Fark for more information on that. Per our approved zoning board of adjustment bylaws, the review and decision of each application occurs in two parts tonight. The first part is what we call the public hearing. This is where the applicant and citizens address this board and speak to the merits of the case. The order of testimony is as follows. First, the applicant will have fifteen minutes to present their case. Then, those in favor will have a limit of five minutes each to speak. Then, those in opposition or with questions will have a limit of five minutes each to speak. Then, the applicant has five minutes to speak in rebuttal, and then, a representative and only one person of those in opposition or with questions will have five minutes to speak in rebuttal. We ask that you direct all testimony to this board and not to anyone in the audience. If you have any questions about an application, they are to be directed to the board and we'll get them answered. The second part of tonight's agenda or meeting is called the public meeting, where this board debates the merits of the case amongst ourselves. Please note that during the public meeting, there is no testimony allowed from the audience. We ask that you silence your cellphones, and if you need to have a conversation, please feel free to step out into the hallway. Mr. Fark, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay. Is anybody in the audience that have any questions? Okay, so tonight, we have a quorum of five voting members that are here, so unless somebody recuses them from our case, there will be a full board tonight to vote. Okay, I will call the first case. Open the first case for the owner is Parrot Family Revocable Trust, Tim and Donna Parrot. Parrot, sorry, I don't know how to spell it.
Parrot's correct.
Parrot, okay. Twenty-three Wood Street. Parrot Family Revocable Trust owner, Tim and Donna Parrot, trustees, applicant of twenty-three Wood Street, Sheet forty-seven, Lot two fifty. Requesting a variance from Land use code, Section one ninety dash one ninety-two. C, to exceed maximum twenty-four-foot wide driveway curb cut, eighteen feet existing on Cortlandt Street, an extra sixteen feet proposed on Wood Street, for a total width of thirty-four feet to the IRA district. Welcome, and just give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Tim Parrot, twenty-three Wood Street.
Just tell us kind of, we've got your application. It was thorough. I believe we all understand what you're trying to do. Just kind of just go over kind of what you're trying to do and what you're requesting.
Yep. So I have an eighteen-foot curb cut on the Cortlandt Street side of my door. I have a detached garage. The driveway's on Cortlandt Street. Again, I'm on the corner of Cortlandt and Wood Street. My driveway on Cortlandt Street is actually only twelve feet wide, but the curb is cut at eighteen feet, so I'm just going to start with that preface of it. And when I spoke with, and so I have a request. I bought this house in 2012, and it has a side entrance door on the Wood Street north side of my home that has access to the side lot side of my property. And when I bought that property, I thought I was going to put a driveway there for the long term of it, where I'd be able to park my car there and be able to enter into my kitchen without having to walk fifty feet from my garage or from my driveway. Since then, I have, since purchased an RV that, and this meeting is not about my RV, but I have parked, I am currently parking my RV on my property and plan to continue to store it on my property. And instead of driving over the road, or instead of driving over my grass, I would prefer to have a driveway put in that place so that I could drive it smoothly instead of deteriorating my front lawn on Wood Street. So that's kind of where I'm at with it. I believe, I did put in my permit request that it was going to be sixteen by ninety-four. I'm looking for sixteen feet at the road so that I can turn into the property correctly, and the driveway will end up being twelve feet wide with vegetation on both sides of it. I have a beautiful home and a beautiful lot in the city, and I plan to contain that as well. At this time, I have a vinyl fence that we will also be moving forward to the front of my house, which is thirty-eight feet off of the road with my RV parked behind the fence. So I'm well within my means of twenty-five feet off the road, fifty feet from the corner of Cortlandt and Wood Street. Wood Street is a much quieter road. I don't, I believe the driveway will add value to my property and not put a deterrence on the properties of the surrounding properties in my neighborhood. And with the gate on it, it is literally, well, it's pushed very far back into my backyard so that it's not creating a blockage for the view of the street from my immediate neighbor. And looking around, I don't have any immediate abutters joining us here either at this time. And the other option of it is to park my RV off of Cortlandt Street. Cortlandt Street is a much busier road. I don't know the road, the car count. I should have brought that too here, because I do have a neighbor that lives on Toll Street that tells me what the car count is on that road, and it's significant. And I would rather not be backing in and out of Cortlandt Street on the occasion that I take my vehicle out, and I do take it out a fair amount, and it'll be easier with that. And the other side of it is, is I don't have, there is higher restrictions on, well, not higher, my home. I'd have a much higher cost of adjustment to park my RV on the Cortlandt side of it. I have a detached garage that is seven feet from my property line that will not accommodate my bus, and there's no room to park it on the backside of the garage, so I'd have to park it in the front, which now makes, it impedes my exit from my garage to my house. I'd have to walk out to the front of the garage and create a new patio to go around my RV in order to park it there. So it just doesn't make any sense, and I'd rather not put up a garage that holds the RV on Cortlandt Street. So I don't have any plans of doing a garage. It's strictly access to be able to get onto Wood Street and then park it behind the fence and have it on a slab there, and so it doesn't deteriorate my lawn, and then we go from there. Most of the homes in our, you know, the four corners, I'm aware that the houses on the four corners of Cortlandt and Wood Street, all their driveways are on Cortlandt Street, which was done in nineteen forty, my house was built in nineteen forty-nine. You know, they put it there. There are many homes in the City of Nashua that have two driveways, especially on corner lots, and I don't think, I'm eighty-five feet away from the corner. I don't have any blockage of the views of the traffic. I believe my messed-up front yard right now is more of a disappointment to the neighborhood than a paved driveway. I would rather it be paved so that there's less maintenance to it. It's a higher cost to me, but that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking for, to get out of this easement. And I do have the ability to put six feet on either side of my house without a variance, and I'm looking for, you know, a ten-foot, you know, variance to be able to complete the job that I want to do so I can improve the curb appeal of my house and improve the safety of backing my RV in and out of my property without interfering with any other people that are immediately there. So that's really all I have, so I could sit up here for fifteen minutes, but I guess I'll cut it short at seven minutes and thirty-five seconds left to go. Thank you for your time. Do you have questions?
Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Lionel?
Did you consider replacing your existing garage and the short, narrow driveway with a longer, deeper garage and driveway? It seems to be the...
Over a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, I understand it's expensive, that RV probably isn't cheap either.
Well, no, and it was not. My driveway is liter, how, has everybody visited my property?
Yes.
Yes. My driveway is, is it fifty feet from the corner of Toll's and Cortlandt Street? That, or it might be a hundred feet from the corner of Toll's and Cortlandt Street. So I believe it is a, more of a safety issue backing in and out of that from Cortlandt Street than it is from Wood Street. The traffic count on Wood Street is minimal. It is, it may be considered a cut-through to get from Cortlandt Street to Stark Street to go back down to Atherton Street, but that traffic is minimal. Most of the traffic, as I would imagine you guys are aware, comes from Canal Street, up through Chandler and Toll Street, up Cortlandt, to get across instead of going down Canal Street to Main Street. So I believe this, from a safety standpoint, it is going to be more difficult to move in and out of there with the vehicle. And I'd have to, it's not just a new garage. I have a twenty-four by twenty-four garage there right now, and yes, it was built in the forties, forty-nine or fifty. That property is, I'd have to tear that down and put up a sixteen by forty-eight garage for the RV alone, and then move my two-car garage closer to the house. I did look at it, you know, I have a fenced-in yard, completely fenced-in yard. I have my garage is set thirty feet off of the road, and then, I would have to put the, the option is to park my RV between my garage and my house, which means I don't have a clear path from my garage. It's a safety issue. It's a, it's not, and I have, the big, the big thing that makes this more sensible to me is that I have a side door from my house on the Wood Street side. I have a side entrance from my house, and it's very straight shot to it, and it's an easy access into my home. Whether I had the RV, this conversation isn't about my RV. It's a conversation about adding a second driveway onto Wood Street, which is common. The entire street has driveways on Wood Street with everybody parking in their driveways, both commercial vehicles and personal vehicles. So it's, I just don't think that a, I had no plans on tearing my garage down and replacing it. I did buy an RV. I own up to that a hundred percent, but there's hundreds of RVs in the City of Nashua. There's hundreds of RVs that are in the City of Nashua that are not twenty-five feet from the road. They're not, you know, they're sitting on people's gravel driveways. They're sitting on people's front yards. This is, moved back away from it the best that I could, and I believe, from looking around, unless the abutters, and nobody's shared that with me yet, they had the opportunity to write in.
They did.
Yeah, so we have written requests from the abutters not to allow the driveway?
We can go over that afterwards.
We'll go over that afterwards. Okay. But, so there's my time. Any other questions?
Mr. Courier, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, one of the things we look at is, is there, you know, is there perhaps a way to get, you know, the property owner what they want without a variance? And of course, one of the things I thought you kind of alluded to, you're six feet off, you thought about going twelve and twelve and not even having to come here.
Not, excuse me?
Would he need a second curb cut? Who was twelve and twelve?
Well, I have a twelve-foot wide driveway, but the curb cut is eighteen feet. That was brought to my attention.
Well, I guess so, my question, let me just clarify with Mr. Fark, is if the homeowner had a twelve-foot curb cut at the existing garage, I know it's eighteen, stipulate, if you change that to a twelve-foot curb cut and then put a twelve-foot curb cut in for the RV, would a variance be required?
No. I mean, we measure the curb cut at the property line. After what they do in the radius is really just more for turning in, but it's not on their property, so they're not really responsible for it. So we just measure it at the property line.
So my curb cut is not eighteen feet? The eighteen feet...
Whatever it is at the property line.
So I disagree with that. My driveway is only, my driveway is not eighteen feet wide. Well, I take that back. Maybe it is. I don't believe it is. When I, when I first brought it to the city, it was because the curb at the street was cut at eighteen feet, which is not my property, because I have sidewalks on both, I have sidewalks on both sides of, both street frontages, and my driveway is thinner than my curb cut at the street.
It's just common to have the turning radius.
Yeah, no, and I understand that, but...
So when I looked at your driveway, sir, I mean, we won't debate the merits of that.
No, no. So if it's eighteen feet, it's eighteen feet.
But honestly, you know, I looked at it, I knew it was a little bit more, because I looked at it, and I know you could put two cars side by side going in the driveway, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, so two cars side by side, you would be, you know, you, at twelve feet, you'd be pretty challenged at twelve feet wide, right?
No. I'm going to, I'm going to take that statement back.
Yeah.
Actually, I'll take that statement back. I have an eighteen-foot garage door, and my driveway's as big as my garage door. So I'll take, I'll take that statement back. I have eighteen feet, so...
Parking space is nine feet wide, so...
No, I'll take it back. I have eighteen feet, I'll take the eighteen-foot...
We'll move on, and I guess we're not here to argue with it, and that's not the point. I think we were just trying to recognize that maybe it really is more than twelve feet.
It is.
Yeah.
I'll go to the eighteen-foot mark, because I'm...
Okay. Okay. Mr. Courier, I'm sorry, is there anything else? Okay. All right.
Anybody else?
Any questions for the applicant? So, sir, what we gave you was two letters that were received by the same person. You can review that.
Yep.
You may be back up to speak on anything that you've heard or that, but we'll let you know, okay?
Sure.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Does anybody else in the audience like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, anybody with questions, concerns, or objections to this application? Come on up, ma'am, and give us your name and address.
Hi, I'm Susan Gagnon. I live at thirty-one Wood Street. It really upsets me to have to be here and speak in opposition of the curb cut that's proposed for Wood Street and the parking of the RV. It's just not in keeping with the neighborhood, the character of the houses. They're on a corner lot. There is a garage and a curb cut on Cortlandt Street. I feel the safety issue is kind of disingenuous, when we have children, cars, as many cars, and people coming in and out. And I just think it's not something that's in keeping with the neighborhood. There's nobody else on our street that has two driveways, two curb cuts, or is parking a very large, expandable RV. I think it's wonderful that they are enjoying their RV. I think there are other resources available for them to park and enjoy their RV and their property. So my husband and I, Jerry Gagnon, are in opposition, and respectfully submit that. Thank you.
Excuse me, ma'am, hold on. Any questions? Ma'am, just a quick question. Thank you very much for coming.
Oh, thanks.
Appreciate it. So, ma'am, I have a question for you.
Oh, okay.
The owners of this property, or any property, most, in most cases, have the right to park a recreational vehicle on their property.
Correct.
So they're going to continue to park that RV there, no matter what happens?
Correct.
Tonight, most likely. So you live in that neighborhood, I don't. So would you, as you drive past this house, and again, it's just kind of an aesthetic thing, you know, you're going to have this RV there, and I know you don't like that, but it's going to be there. So would it be, would you like it better if there was a paved driveway instead of ruts on the lawn, or are you just like, you would prefer that there is no driveway, and no matter what they park there, it's just going to tear it up the lawn?
I would prefer that there's no driveway there. It sets a precedent for people that would purchase the house in the future, could park all kinds of things, multiple vehicles. I would rather have them rut up their lawn and have them park their RV on their property than to see a curb cut and a paved driveway. It's very close to the property line. They do have two entrances to their house. I think they enter their house from their automobiles on the same side of the house. I don't see them entering from where they park their RV, except now they park their RV there. But I think a curb cut and a driveway is setting a precedent to allow anybody to put a curb cut and a driveway in, because they want to park a vehicle there. So that's, that's my rationale.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. Anybody else in the audience that like to speak in opposition of this application, or any questions? Okay, seeing none. Before I have you come up, sir, I'm going to read two emails that...
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Same person.
We'll read this, I'm going to read these two emails into the record. First one was, this is received by Kyle Metclaff of...
Metcalf.
Metcalf, from the World Code Enforcement, who passed on an email from Mike Crissis, of twenty-three Wood Street. He writes, "I have concerns about this variance request scheduled for April thirteenth. I request an additional driveway cut on Wood Street to build a driveway to store a thirty-four-foot Class A motorhome that extends to thirteen feet wide with the sides open. This vehicle has recently reparked in a space proposed for the driveway with the sides open. Tiffin Motorhomes, the manufacturer of this vehicle, furnish me with the width information dimension. They allow fifteen feet of shows to provide space around the vehicle. I have not yet been able to measure the distance between the two propane tanks, one-hundred-and-eighty gallons each, and the property line fence between twenty-three and twenty-five Wood Street. I also have not been able to photograph the vehicle, because it has been on the premises since, has not been on the premises since this past Saturday. It appears that Mr. Parrot has a home, has, is at home, but I have not approached her. I believe a thirty-thousand-pound vehicle that holds a maximum of eighty gallons of gasoline, twenty-four gallons of propane, is safe next to two residential propane tanks. The thirteen-foot width of the vehicle fills most of the space available for it and access around it, would hamper access in case of emergencies. The basis for this variance request is that they're all over Nashua. I have not completed a search of Nashua, but I doubt I will see many instances of such large vehicles stored in somewhat narrow space next to three-hundred-plus gallons of propane. The owner of twenty-three Wood Street has cited a driveway storage of two trailers nearby on Toll Street, as an example of which his request is based, but his installation dwarfs this example. I have contacted Patricia Kleem, my ward alderman, who was attempting to contact the head of the zoning board. She suggested I contact you to see if you have an opinion that should be considered the approval of this process. I appreciate your assistance in this matter, and look forward to a response that might be presented at the April twenty-third meeting." Michael Crissis, sixty-one Cortlandt Street. He also sent another email on April twenty-third. "I spoke with the fire department Monday, April twenty-second, and they were going to inspect twenty-three Wood Street to determine if they agreed with my concerns of creating a fire hazard with the storage of a large motorhome in close proximity to two residential propane tanks with capacity of one-hundred-and-eighty gallons of propane each. The vehicle has a capacity of eighty gallons of gasoline and twenty-four gallons of propane. I believe everyone's best interest will be served if we wait for an inspection. I will not be attending a meeting this evening. I see nothing to be gained by my availability to answer questions without the expert opinion being handed down." Those were the two emails that were sent in, in opposition of this application. So, sir, you have five minutes to come back. You can respond to any of these. Again, we understand what your application's here for, but feel free to use your five minutes as you choose.
The propane tanks in question, I've already gotten a quote to have them moved to the other side of my house at a cost that I understand that that's, it's actually not a safety. I talked to my propane company. They need four feet of, or it's actually two feet away from windows and two feet away from everything around it. My vehicle is not hooked up to those propane tanks. It holds its own secure tanks for it. The question about no two driveways in the area, the house on Cortlandt, corner of Cortlandt Street, and I should know the number of it, but unfortunately, I don't, Cortlandt Street and Concord Street has two driveways, and it is, it falls within it. I believe they're probably both twelve feet, but it's literally five feet away from the corner of Cortlandt Street and Concord Street. And I know that the standard today is, I believe it was twenty-five, I thought it was twenty-five feet, and you can correct me, but we're eighty-five feet away from the corner of Cortlandt Street. Was I correct?
Fifty feet as well.
Fifty feet. Okay, and I'm eighty-five feet from the closest corner from where the driveway would be. And number eighty-five Cortlandt Street, Concord Street, they just added a second driveway onto Bessemer Street, and they had a driveway on Concord Street. So I believe they, they may be in their twenty-four-foot mark, so they didn't need a variance, but they have two car, they have two driveways on that road. They're immediate, they're not abutting neighbors, but they're in my neighborhood. And if I went to a few other properties, I believe I would find them. The property, again, I'm just back to it from a safety standpoint, and my side entrance from my home, the statement that we don't use that door, I use that door every day. I go out, whether I had my RV there before or not, I use that door on a regular basis. We have a fully gated-in backyard with a nine-foot gate outside that side door that is open and closed on a regular basis, not for traffic coming in, but for me to do lawn care and to take care of the back of my property and things of that sort. I do plan on moving my gate up to the front corner of my house, which again, is thirty-eight feet off of the road, to bring the bus, the RV behind it. It's registered. It's brand-new. It's used on a regular basis. It comes and goes. Mr. Crissis made the comment that I hid it or removed it because of this to us personally. I didn't have it in writing or recorded, but we didn't hide it. We went camping the last two weekends, and we left it at the campsite that we were at. And last, we picked this up last summer, and we were on the road from August through the beginning of November, and moved the RV in and out on a regular basis. and moved the RV in and out on a regular basis. So, that's all. I appreciate it. Any other questions?
Okay, we're all set. Thank you for coming. Ma'am, per our rules and bylaws, you were the only one who testified in opposition. You have an opportunity, if you want, to come and speak for five minutes in rebuttal, or you can rest.
I'll rest.
Okay, thank you. So I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting for this case. Mr. Curry.
Well, I guess I'm... I wanna say on the fence on this. When I look at the criteria, especially... literal enforcement of the provisions would result in an unnecessary hardship. I'm not sure if I'm seeing that in this property. There are instances, many instances, where there's two driveways that this board has permitted. You know, my, like, to me, a typical situation is a long existing lot that has inadequate parking, kind of in a congested area of Nashua. Clearly, the owners or renters have been parking on the lawn, or on the curb, or on the sidewalk. And someone comes to us to put a driveway in, and there's not one. And to me, that speaks to what you were saying, like, well, they're gonna park there anyway, so make it look better. But on the other hand, you know, a 96-foot driveway, that's three Suburbans and, you know, another car. If they weren't three big cars, that's four big cars. And the point about a future homeowner, I mean, if I bought a house with that kind of driveway, I'd likely fill it up with things, whatever. So I, I mean, the length of the driveway, it's not about the RV, but it is one big driveway. So I'm struggling with this support. I don't wanna say no, I'm just looking at, hearing other opinions on it. But, you know, I guess one other point is the idea of, you know, it's being parked there now, and the lawn looks lousy because of it, you know, because it's rutted. I mean, the rest of the place, I think, looks great. Beautiful property, I love that stonework. But, you know, the idea of if we have a driveway, it'll look better, but that does memorialize a driveway. And I think about going off in the future, that'll be used as a 96-foot-long driveway. Whereas, and I think, I don't find any hardship in the property as it is right now. That's where I'm at. It's just my opinion, and I'm looking forward to hearing four others.
Mr. MacCarry. Oh, you first.
I'm really in the same place. It's not about the RV that's allowed to use. I don't think it's about the propane tanks either. But there's, when I look at the property and look at the area, there's nothing about it that seems to make it distinct or special. It's a corner lot, but there are corner lots, obviously, all over this neighborhood. It's laid out as a grid. Size-wise, there's nothing unusual about it. There's nothing unusual about its shape or its proportion. So that's what I can't get to. I can't get to what are the special conditions? The desire of the owner to have an RV, I mean, that's fine. But I don't see any special conditions in the property. I think if somebody wants to have an RV, it's allowed, you know, so certainly they can do that. I wouldn't say, though, that it's a normal, typical, or necessary use for a single-family house lot. So I'm in the same place that you are. I just don't see what the special conditions are in the property that would require that we exceed the curb cut limitations.
Mr. Lionel.
I'm pretty much in the same place as Mr. MacCarry and Mr. Courier. I don't find any special conditions of the property that justify adding, adding, it's not simply the second driveway, but exceeding the ordinance's limit on the width of the driveway. Adding such a long driveway, and the variance runs with the property, so that's a permanent thing. I think that it would detract from the value of surrounding homes to have this long additional driveway there on the property line. I don't think that there's, I don't think it beats the spirit and intent of the ordinance. And I don't see a compelling reason to vote for it.
Mr. Curry.
Well, it's like being between a rock and a hard place here. You're caught in the middle. I live next to a property that has two driveways. Down the street is a huge driveway with a huge RV. And it's just across Concord Street from where the Parrots live. It's, we're in the same neighborhood. So, I don't know. For me, I think of the yard, the rutting. Is there anything underneath it? What's gonna happen in the winter? How bad is that gonna get? What is it gonna look like? And then I think of, the street is a beautiful street. Wood Street really is a very, very quiet, pretty street. And so that is a little bit out of character. And yet, do I want to tell somebody they don't have a right to buy something and to park it? That's probably a big part of the dilemma that I think maybe we all face. The hardship for me would be having to take down a garage and rebuild a garage because then there wouldn't be a lot of the legality issues. That's the hardship that I see. Because the only way to get around what they want to do now is to do that. I just don't know. I'm on the fence with trying to reconcile what the neighborhood looks like versus what the people want against what concretely and by the codes say should happen. So I am in betwixt and between. It's a conundrum. Don't know.
So we all know, for myself, beautiful neighborhood. My wife and I always drive over there, and she, she has her dream street that's in that neighborhood. So I won't tell you what street it is. But I'll just tell you that she has her idea there. But, but beautiful neighborhood, and so... But I do know that Cortlandt Street is a cut-through. And, you know, at times of the day, we know that there's heavy traffic. I used to use it as a regular cut-through to, you know, get over from, you know, the exit 70 area to Hudson, you know. So, you know, we all know it's busy there. So, you know, there is, there's something that we could say about trying to, you know, swinging off the street, you know, for safety-wise, off of Cortlandt Street. So, that doesn't necessarily, you know, account for all of my thinking, but, you know, there's something to be said there. I think it would be unreasonable, I mean, let me rephrase that. Personally, my opinion is, certainly with any amount of money, we would take that garage down, we'd push it back, we'd put a big long driveway, and we'd be all set, right? But that's not what's in front of us. And, you know, we can judge, you know, in our minds, sometimes we can judge what people may have or don't have, or what they can and can't do. But, so regardless of that, this is what's in front of us. What's kinda interesting about this is that as we look around and we see a lot of different requests for driveways or that type of thing, and we're in lots of different parts of the city. And it just so happens that this part of the city, I think, not huge lots, but, you know, nice lots, houses are pretty much pushed back off the street. So, you know, is it a detrimental effect that this applicant happens to have a house that's pushed back? So when we say a 96-foot driveway, you know, what are we really saying? It's 96 feet because he wants to continue to go past the house, right? But if the driveway only comes to the home, that's what, 25, 30 feet? You know, you know what I'm saying? If it just stopped at the front edge of the house. So the 90, the 90-something feet is, again, because we're going past the house. So, it seems to be, again, I'm just pointing out facts, right, that I see that. It just seems to be a really long driveway because I think where the house is situated. So, owning this camper, this motorhome was, you know, absolutely the choice of the applicant. I am fully confident that the applicant will continue to park that RV there and will find some other solutions or means to do whatever. We see some creative things that happen in the city of Nashua. I've seen pads poured in the backyards where people end up driving in their backyard and park on top of a pad. I mean, there's nothing that says they can't put a pad down, right? I mean, I've seen it whether or not, you know, for parking. I know, I know it's kind of, some people say it's just a stone deck or something, right?
I mean, somebody could hypothetically pave a little area past the front yard setback. Like, in this case, it could be 40, 50 feet long by 12 feet wide or 16 feet wide. However, they'd have to go from the paved right-of-way portion on Wood Street, cross over the little grass median, which is part of the right-of-way, cross the sidewalk, I believe there's a sidewalk there, and then go in, go on the grass to that paved area in the back. But eventually DPW will find out about that because they'll see the ruts, and they'll see the damage to the city sidewalk, which can't handle that weight. Eventually, that'll be an issue that they'd have to repair and pay for, so... But people do park them in the back, certainly, on a pad in the back. Like, same thing with a basketball court, or people have tennis courts, or other patio areas in the back that are fairly large. People could also have one for an RV. They could, it could conceivably park something back there. I don't have any issue with that.
So, again, the point that I was trying to make is that there's these possibilities that exist that are going to contribute an effect. So, when Mr. Curry had spoke earlier, just kind of, you know, kinda rang true with me was, and again, not the reason why to do it, but memorializing what's actually happening or probably gonna happen. Mr. Fark is correct. I'm sure that if there was enough issues or complaints made, that, you know, if that was the way we're driving in. But again, if they found some other way to get back there or to park it on that side, it would still end up over there. So I'm having a hard time, you know, this is two separate things, right? The applicant would say, hey, look, I do have this motorhome. This is about adding a driveway on that side of the house. I have a side door, there is an existing door there. That's where the kitchen is, per testimony. So, does it make, is it completely, you know, doesn't make sense? I don't know, you know? So, I'm having a hard time. I was kind of, again, kind of on the fence, but I'm on the other side of the fence, kind of having a hard time to go over the fence and say, hey, no, that's not something that I think is right for this neighborhood. Me to say, I need more to say that I wouldn't, wouldn't, what's the words I'm looking for? Wouldn't, not allow, I wouldn't, what is it here in front of us that would say that this applicant should deny this, yeah, this application? Because again, we're here for a variance because they're requesting a variance. I know that it's over and beyond what is allowed. But again, that's why we're here, right? So, for the owner to use their property, to see how they feel fit to use their property, they're asking for an extra driveway. So I'm having, I'm having a challenge, just hitting that bar to say, you know, no, that's not... I don't think that is the right thing in this property. Follow what I'm saying?
I'm on your side of the fence. I'm hard-pressed to say no, for those reasons. And I live close enough, my street crosses Cortlandt. And Cortlandt is a stinking thoroughfare. People just, we had to actually have stop signs put, and people blow right through the stop signs. In fact, one of my neighbors was actually hit walking his dog because people just come straight on through, and they just cut across. And it is very, very busy. So for that, I understand the rationale and the desire. The kitchen door is another. I'm hard-pressed to say no. I think I would really need a lot more information for me to stand up and vote against this. But that's my humble opinion, and we all have one.
So right now, if, just so that, we just kind of see where we're at, it seems like it's three against two, maybe four, maybe, unless something changes. And, you know, do we need more discussion? Or would somebody in opposition care to make a motion? If there's no more discussion. I don't want to cut it short, I just, you know, don't want to belabor the, belabor it. Again, we're here for the citizens of Nashua. I just want to make sure that we've given it enough attention. I think I'm pretty set where I am.
I mean, I appreciate hearing, you know, I kind of kicked it off, and then I heard four other opinions, but I am in the same place. You know, I was at the beginning, you know, I've kind of heard after me two against, two for. I haven't changed my position, just so we know what's out there on the table. I don't know where the others stand.
I'm still in the same place as well.
As am I, okay. So I think it would be up to one of you, three, to make a motion at this point.
Can I give it a go? I'll make a motion on behalf of the Parrot family revocable trust. Again, the applicant is Tim and Donna Parrot at 23 Wood Street. The request this evening is to exceed the 24-foot-wide driveway curb cut. On record here, we have 18 feet as existing, and an extra 16 feet is proposed for a total width of 34 feet. I think we have a split decision before us tonight, but I think the majority of the board finds that the variance is not needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. I think a portion of this board finds that there aren't special conditions of the property that warrant a second driveway, and that it would not, you know, literal enforcement of the ordinance does not place an undue burden on the property owner. I think a portion of this board finds it's not within the spirit and intent of the ordinance to allow the second driveway. I think a portion of this board finds that it would negatively impact the surrounding parcels. And I would leave it at that, so I make a motion to deny.
Does anybody second that motion? Second, Mr. Lionel. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of denying the application? That's three, that's Kara, Courier, and Lionel.
I know who's opposed.
And all those in favor of...
You know those opposed?
All those opposed of the denial? It's Boucher and, okay? So that motion fails. There is a 30-day window of appeal.
The motion passed.
The motion passed to deny your application, I'm sorry. So with that, there is a 30-day window of appeal. If you need more info, please call Mr. Fark at your leisure. Again, there's 30 days from tomorrow, okay? All right. Thank you, sir. With that, I'll close case number one, and I'll open case number two. Case number two is for Kyle and Brittany Kavanaugh.
Kavanaugh, yes.
Kavanaugh, sorry. Silent G. 83 Double Nav, Kyle and Brittany Kavanaugh, owners of 83 Double Nav, Sheet 53B, Lot 4, requesting variance and man use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to allow a portion of a proposed attached 10-by-48 copwort to encroach up to 10 feet into a 30-foot required rear yard setback to the R9 zoning district. So why don't you come on up and give us your name and address, please? give us your name and address, please?
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name's Kyle Cavanaro, and I'm the owner of eighty-three Dublin Ave. in Nashua here. My wife Brittany Cavanaro. Um, and I'm here today to request a variance into my rear setback. Uh, we have plans to build an, a garage addition on our current house, and on that garage addition, I'd like to have a carport on the side of it. And as we've laid out our plans with our architect, we found that it's going to be, um, slightly intrusive into the rear setback. Uh, I think there'll be two posts that would be actually into the rear setback. Um, so, for those of you who don't know, um, we bought this house almost a year ago, and we've been fixing it up since we moved in. It was actually a, a Financial Housing Authority home that was foreclosed on and abandoned. Um, we've put a lot of time and sweat equity into it, making it what our ideal home would be, and part of that is going to be this kind of addition with a carport. Um, so, that's kind of why we're here today.
Um, any questions for the applicant? Mr. Lionel?
In the back of your property where this carport is, do you have any kind of fencing or, or screening plantings between that and the property behind you?
There is currently none. There are a couple old, um, I want to call them like farm-style fence posts, where it's just a, you know, maybe a picket with one and then a bottom row. There was, at one point, one of those. It's since decayed. Um, I think there's a, a rough outline of maybe a post here or there, but that's it in the rear setback.
So, from this carport, um, would you be able, what could you see behind, behind you?
Um, so I included pictures. I don't know if you've...
I, I have the pictures, but I have not, which, which one, uh...
Sure. So, the first one, right. So if you were looking at the page that has three yellow circles and two red circles...
We don't have the colors, but, okay.
Um, it's got...
But I, I see the one you mean, though.
This page before was thirty-nine Meredith Drive.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so that would be, where I took those pictures from would be where the, the post itself would be. So you could see my, my rear setback faces a condo association, which is kind of, uh, a decent ways away. Um, you know, probably something in the two and a five-hundred-plus feet. Um, and then you can see the other homes, you know, if I'm in the front of the, the garage side, which would be the five Dunbarton and the eleven Dunbarton. So I tried to give you a, a snapshot of kind of looking out from where I would be at that setback.
Oh, oh, here, color. All right. And, and what, I didn't see, um, what this, the construction of the carport would be, and what, what are your...
So, yeah, so we, on the last page, um, we had sent revised site plans to Kate, something a little cleaner, but it's still hard to actually get a good visual of, of it. Um, but yeah, so it's going to be just several, I think it's going to be eight, eight by eight beams that would run the span. Um, it would tie into the, the garage we're working on planning out right now. Um, so kind of as a predecessor to this, this process, I'm just trying to understand, you know, the, if I can get a variance, because aesthetically, I would like to see it run the whole length of the, the garage that we plan to build. And part of that is that, that setback of the carport posts themselves.
Okay, thank you.
So, the proposed garage, is it existing now? Am I reading that it's a forty-eight feet long? Is that what's proposed, or what's there?
So that's, so we currently have a carport there already. It's a rather dilapidated structure. It's, it's not in the best shape. Um, it's, that's how we came to the house. Um, originally, when we bought the house, we knew that that was something we'd like to switch out, in fact, to do a formal garage. Um, it's kind of always been something I've, I've ideally wanted. Um, we do have plans to do kind of similar to what we did with the rest of the house, which is the cedar state, cedar shake siding and stonework on the bottom of it, um, to try to keep it with the aesthetics of the house, which has stone in front of it. Um, and the carport would just be, again, um, probably eight-by-eight pine beams with architectural dark shingles on the top of it, um, following kind of the, the pattern of the house and the, the, the proposed garage.
So would that roof, it would be just beams with a roof and open sides?
Yep. Yep. And, and the reason that why I'm asking for variance, because we don't even have the, the building permit yet for this house yet. This is all just working with our architect, but, you know, we're going to have, we want to obviously pave that area. So it's, as we go out and get quotes and bids, and, you know, you get a contractor that's full up excavation through, you know, finished work, we just want to make sure that everybody understands the full scope of the project, and that, you know, anything that we will have had to have, you know, received permission for, we've done in advance. So, it would be a paved carport, beams above it, or beams on the side of it with the roof above it. And again, so those last two posts about, I think I measured, it's actually going to be about eight feet in, would be, uh, with kicks on the rear setback as it's currently planned out.
And is that proposed to be one-story high, and is the roof line running?
So it's going to be, I want to say a story and a half. Um, so it would have, the second story would be five-foot knee walls, and I don't have the full plans, because, again, this was still preliminary drafting. Um, but it would be five-foot knee walls on the second story with just a, a normal pitch roof that matches the pitch of the other side of our house. So if you look at our house as a ranch, the middle pitch is kind of front to back, and the bedroom side is kind of pitched the opposite way. So our, our garage would pitch the similar side to our bedroom. So, from an aesthetic standpoint, kind of the shape of the house is the same. So, um, but yeah, it would be a, a two-story, but again, knee walls, so it's not as, as tall and not as big of a pitch.
Mr. Curry is estimating that the incursion's about thirty-two square feet total. About that.
Mr. Fark.
Mr. Fark, oh. I'm looking at you. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Fark.
I'm all set. For questions.
Mr. McCarron.
Uh, so, um, how, how many vehicles would we be able to park in the garage, and how many with the carport?
So it would be, uh, three in the garage. Um, and the reason you can't fit a fourth is because the, where the stairwell to go up to the upstairs of the garage would be, um, would interfere with that space. Um, so, we're planning for three cars plus, you know, tractor, lawnmower, um, you know, things of that nature. Um, and the carport would fit too. So we have three vehicles on the property now. Um, you know, we, my wife and I each have a motorcycle, so that would, could fill that space. But, you know, this is our, our long-term residence, so there will be kids at some point. You know, it's just, it's, if we're going to do it, I'm going to try to do it right from the start and, and plan for the future. So that's kind of why we're looking at adding this now. So I guess to answer your question, five, five vehicles would be, uh, with this would total fit.
Thank you. Any other questions? We're all set for now. Anybody else like to speak in favor of this application? Anybody who would like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Questions?
So I'm just curious how close to the lot line. That's all.
So, uh, do you have any questions? If you'd like, if you want to ask that question, we, you could come on up.
I can help.
Okay. All right. So, um, the couple in the audience is just, uh, identifying that they don't have any questions. So, that leaves no one else in the audience. Ma'am, if you want to talk, just, ma'am, hold on, hold on, hold on, ma'am. Sorry, I'm sorry. The rules are that you have to give your name and address, and just come on up, and we'll give you all the time you need.
Margot Robes.
What, what's your address?
Our property abuts theirs.
What's the address?
Thirty-nine Meredith.
Okay, great.
You have a picture of our place?
Uh, yes, we do. And we have it.
So, the fence that used to be there, the split rail or that type of, uh, wood fence, has rotted away, so that there's like nothing there.
Right.
So, it will need to, we, either they will, or we will, need to, at some point, get the property line marked out. I can't find one of the corner markers. So, um, but pretty much, I have an idea, and I'm just curious how close to the, the lot line they're going to be. That's all.
So, so, so ma'am, so what you're concerned about is your, your lot line, and that, make sure that they're not building over the line, or too close to the line?
No, it's just, um, how do I want to say this?
As long as they're near the lot, it's okay.
Right. I mean, it's just within the limits, that's all. So we're just curious how close they're coming to us. That's all.
So, their building is going to be at least three hundred feet away, three hundred feet away from you, from your...
From the back corner of your house.
From the back corner of your house.
You've got a long backyard.
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, we, we have an acre of land supposedly.
Easily three hundred, if not more, feet away. So, I, I don't even think you'll probably even see it with all the vegetation and trees.
Yeah, I will.
According to the site plan, the, uh, the setback there is thirty feet, and they're requesting a ten-foot incursion. So, the closest...
Point.
...point to your lot line would be tw- twenty feet away from your lot line.
Okay, that's all. I'm just curious how close they, it would come to the...
Right. So, and, and this, this variance, if, if approved, is very specific. So they, they couldn't go and make, make it any closer than what they're asking for.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Um, so, um, thank you, Mr. Lionel. So, just so you understand, so twenty feet? Do you have any other questions for us?
No, no.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant, for the, this person? Is it Butter? Okay. Thank you, ma'am, for coming. Appreciate it.
Been interested.
Yeah.
Want to be on the board? We have openings.
Per, per our rules, you have an opportunity to come back for five minutes to speak, uh, from what you heard from the, the Butter, or you can rest.
I think I'm rested.
Ma'am, uh, so, so at this point, they, they don't have an opportunity to come back. So ma'am, 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 would you like to come back and speak? Um, okay. So there's nobody else in the audience to speak. I will close the public hearing for case number two and open the public meeting. Mr. Curry?
Well, this is the first time I've gone and sightwalked a property a second time and totally forgot I did it years ago. I'm not getting old. I'm looking at the minutes and said, who, who voted on this case? You know, and this is the second time, you know, you, you can't see the back of this property. You know, we don't walk on private property. You know, so, you know, I drove around with the, you know, looking to see, could this be bothersome to a Butter's? You can't see a thing in my indication from the street. My, my thought was, it probably doesn't impact visually anyone in any way. I think the applicant tried to give a lot of pictures and explanation to, you know, say that it's not going to impact any of Butter's. Appreciate the pictures were taken in winter when the foliage was down. And, uh, so I'm in support of it because it's a uniquely shaped property. The fact that there's a lot of distance from this back corner, uh, I think it would allow, uh, this owner to have this corner of a, a carport on it, and because of the fact that it's so uniquely shaped and there's no structures near it, I'm okay with it, but certainly happy to hear four other opinions.
Mr. Lionel?
Uh, I'm in support of it. Uh, there, given the, uh, large distance to, uh, the neighboring properties, the minimal incursion, uh, visual and, and space, and, and the large setback, um, that's already there, um, I think this is reasonable.
Thank you. Mr. McCarron?
Uh, I, I agree. I, I support it as well. I think for the reasons stated, the, the lot is unusually shaped. It is, um, quite a large lot for the area. Um, also, kind of the way the house is positioned on that lot, it makes it difficult to add on to it, um, because it's already fairly close to the lot line. I think the incursion is de minimis. Uh, I just note it's not the whole length of it in the setback. It's a corner, so it's really a fairly small intrusion, and the use that proposed, although granted, uh, covering up five cars is a lot, it's, it's not out of, not beyond the pale. I think it's, it's within, uh, the, you know, what, what I would call is reasonable and customary residential use. I support it.
Thank you.
I con, I concur. I support it, and, um, for all the aforementioned reasons. And I really like the, um, that long-term future planning, you know? I like that a lot, so I have not an issue.
I also support the application. I'd like to make a motion.
I'll do it.
Thank you, Mr. Lionel.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Kyle and Brittany Cavanaro. Address is eighty-three Dublin Avenue, uh, Sheet fifty-three B, Lot four, requesting variance from land use code, section one ninety-sixteen, Table sixteen-three, to allow a portion of a proposed attached ten-foot by forty-eight-foot carport to encroach up to ten feet into the thirty-foot required rear yard setback. This is in the R nine, uh, district. Uh, the board finds that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions and unusual shape of the property, and, uh, the benefit sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other reasonable method. We believe this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It will not affect, adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. We have testimony from one of Butter saying that they, uh, are fine with it, and we have determined that there's a large distance between the structure and surrounding houses. Uh, the board finds that it's not contrary to the public interest and that substantial justice would be served. So I make a motion to approve this variance.
Seconded by Mr. Curry. Any discussion? All those in favor. That's five to nothing. Congratulations. Motion passes. Just be aware of the thirty-day window of appeal, but highly unlikely. So thanks for coming. With that, I'll close, uh, case number two. We'll wait for Mrs. McAdoo to catch up, and we'll finish our business.
Yeah, I'm good now.
Um, there was meeting minutes from the March twenty-six, two thousand nineteen meeting.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
So we have some meeting minutes from, uh, the, uh, March twenty-six, two thousand nineteen meeting. Does anybody see any, uh, corrections or issues that need to, that need to be addressed? Okay, seeing none.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from March twenty-six as presented.
Anybody second? Mr. Lionel?
Well, Mr. McCarron.
Okay, Mr. McCarron, seconded by Mr. McCarron. Any discussion? All those in favor. It's five to nothing. No, uh...
There's no agenda yet. We still have, we have an extra week in the, uh, schedule this week, so we're still, um, finalizing the agenda. Right now, we have, I, I think about six or seven applications. A little busier.
Weather's getting warmer.
Yeah, that's exactly what it is. And I didn't really see anything.
You said you won't be here. I'm planning on being here. I just was curious who...
I'm planning on being here.
Any word from Mr. Shaw, or...
He's going to be out for a little...
He's going to be out.
I know that...
Estasia?
Estasia, Estasia, Esther, will be here.
Name's not Esther.
I know, but she gave, she's like, you can say that. So, I'm, we're friends, so, but it's Estasia. She will not be, she will be here. At least that's what she said in her text to me.
Yeah.
She had tied up at work today.
Yes, that's what she said.
Any other discussion or anything else? Anybody want to do a motion?
Yeah.
Motion is to adjourn, seconded by...
Seven thirty-eight.
Anybody second? Mr. Lionel? All in favor? It's five to nothing. We're adjourned at seven thirty-eight. Thank you.